This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
So we'll call the meeting to order today, August 23rd, 2023, for our first, uh, 2020, I'm sorry, what?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two, oh, it's not twenty-twenty-three.
Yes.
Don't trust me.
For our first, yes, our first school meeting of the academic year. And we'll first hear from Dr. McGowan.
Thank you, appreciate it. So today, one, perhaps most importantly, would like to welcome our new student representative to the table, Eliza Gauss. Did I say that correctly? Didn't have to, I just asked you 10 seconds ago. Eliza is the new student representative, and we are thrilled to have you. You bring such an important perspective to this table when you share your updates. The student rep has traditionally, over time, shared their updates, and the board, I know, appreciates that great deal, so welcome.
Yay!
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Eliza, did you have anything you want to report on, although it's been the summertime? Did you have a good summer?
Yeah, it was a good summer.
Excellent report, that's perfect.
Yeah, I had a good summer.
Great, great, we're glad to hear it. And I know that you have other things to get to too, so we just wanted to make sure we welcomed you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay!
Welcome to...
Have a great day.
You too.
You too. The next three items are all by statute and requirement each year to be presented in a public hearing, which is the purpose of this first part of the meeting today. They are the district-wide safety plan, the Smart Schools Bond Act presentation, and Code of Conduct. With the safety plan and the Code of Conduct, and I believe also the Bond Act, there will be items for action that the board would take at the next meeting. So the point is that there's a public hearing first, people have an opportunity to weigh in and offer their comments or feedback, and then those are considered prior to the board taking action at the meeting in September. So we're going to start out with the district-wide safety plan and a few updates presented by our assistant superintendent, Mr. O'Leary.
Good morning. So the first one is our district-wide safety plan, which is an annual presentation. We have to provide any changes, update any changes to the plan. So this is a similar presentation from what we've given in the past, and just outlines the framework for the, for the plan. So obviously, this is one of the requirements of the SAVE legislation, and you can see the other requirements are there. We don't get into detail of the next level, which is the building-level emergency response plans. Those are worked at the building level, but for obvious reasons, not shared in a public, a public setting. So the outline of this plan and the guiding principles is this is a comprehensive plan that gives the framework for the school district-wide security plan. So it encompasses activities from early prevention through the response and post-incident response. Part of this meeting is to disseminate the plan information. It's been posted on our website. We invite feedback on it, and we bring that to the safety committee for consideration and then future updates. The plan's clearly defined the roles and responsibilities, and we'll go through that a little bit, and it's continually reviewed and updated. Again, this is a working document, so any changes that are processed by the district safety committee would then come back to the Board of Education and also require an update. Again, the format of the district-wide safety plan is the risk reduction, prevention, and intervention, the response, recovery, annual review, and the appendancy, appendices. So in the risk reduction, and this is where our building principals and building administrators play a critical role in creating the safe environment. So we talk about in the plan cultural competence, social-emotional learning, our second steps in learning-for-justice lessons, restorative practices, and families as partners in the learning process. The training part of it, which is some of the HR, but also in the building-level plans, de-escalation training for our mental health staff and our security, security staff, warning signals of violence, non-violent conflict resolution, emergency response, team training, mediation, mentoring, social skill development, and character education. And then the other tactics, we have the reporting tools, which I'll elaborate on, including our visitor management system, our child pickup procedures at Council Rock and in French Road, and one of the areas where we'll have heightened focus this year is the behavior threat assessment. So that's an ongoing work in partnership with the Brighton Police Department. And then certainly the hazard identification, which is included in our building-level safety plans. So the reporting tools, just to expand on that a little bit. So the Safe Schools Helpline is our primary tip reporting system that's widely used, and the principals do an excellent job of disseminating that, that information. We receive information that's monitored 24/7, and obviously, we respond to things. But being monitored 24/7, if there's the service triage, so if there's a pressing issue, they immediately refer it to 911. So that's, that's an important aspect of that program. One of the things we've invested in this year is upgraded, updated and upgraded our radio system, going from an analog to a digital, and that'll be a part of a comprehensive rebuild of our emergency communication systems. What's on the right is the project that I'll elaborate a little bit more in the Smart Schools Bond Act, but how we're investing in our network and emergency communication systems, building on the Mitel revolution, our phone system, expanding to notifications in our corridors, horns, and again, trying to get the information out as quickly as possible and get the first responders here as quickly as possible. So the response, again, the plan goes through all the details of it. This is just an outline of what's included. Certainly, our incident command system is what we train on at the building level each year. Recovery, defining the roles and responsibilities, and again, next level of detail is at the building-level safety plans, along with the action planning. The important appendices that I mentioned, the safety committee representatives, which are inclusive of Brighton Police, the fire department, ambulance, yep, the three main ones there. Certainly, our buildings and grounds are represented there, all of our labor representatives and building administrators and buildings and grounds. Then you go through telephone numbers, emergency information, again, all of this is included in the, in the plan. So that's a brief overview of the plan. Again, it's on there. We encourage people to review that, ask questions, and highlight any opportunities for improvement. Any questions?
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
And I think I just need a little help, then we'll go to the next one. Which one's next? The Smart Schools Helpline.
It's a new display board. I'm gonna probably ask them for the same.
Yeah, it's great.
This one?
Yes.
Great. So this is actually the same presentation that we gave to the Board of Education in June. I'm just gonna go over the highlights again, so people have the opportunity to review the plan document and, and the presentation. This is part of the Smart Schools Bond Act, which is 2014. So part of that requirement is to develop a comprehensive investment plan that was presented to the Board of Education and further presented to the community. The allowable uses, school connectivity, community connectivity, learning technology, pre-kindergarten classrooms, replacing transportable classrooms, and high-tech security. And we are focusing our investment on high-tech security. So that's what I'll elaborate on, the scope that we're proposing. How much is available to Brighton? Our initial allocation was just short of $1.1 million. We have already utilized $588,000 as part of the Council Rock project. So of those eligible programs, you could see how we've invested in, in leveraging the expansion of Council Rock with high-tech security, video security, door access security, window security glazing. All of that was on the new, new construction at, at Council Rock in the interior, or the entranceway, and then on the new classrooms. So the remaining balance then is just short of $490,000. How are we proposing to use that? These are the areas where we're targeting. So this is a list that's included in the eligible expenses within the Smart Schools. We are putting a more detailed plan together for investment in our surveillance cameras, not to use those as a detection tool, but more of as a preventative tool, utilizing the analytic features that were, that are included in the surveillance cameras. IP public address microphones and speakers, I'll expand on that in just a second. With that includes cable and wiring, and then software and licensing for that surveillance equipment. On the right-hand side, lockdown and panic buttons, software and licensing for entry control equipment, and the installation of, of entry control equipment. So the project priorities then are, again, the multi-activation announcements. So we're building a plan with RELCOM for emergency communications. So if there's an incident of any nature, we can make sure that people know what's happening as quickly as possible with automatic connection to the 911 center to get the first responders here. So with that is, again, mass communications through our phone system, through speakers, through strobe lights, and even the exterior speaker, excuse me. So this is what we're leveraging. Again, it's a comprehensive project, and you'll see some of the things, if I can highlight here. So one of the things we've gone through, the floor plans of each of our buildings, and areas where we're relying on our, just our PA system right now. So areas where this may not be the most effective tool, you think about the cafeterias, auditoriums, places where students or faculty are congregating. We're supplementing that with these digital signage boards that would say, "The building is in shelter-in-place," with strobe lights and a repeating sound, again, to, to supplement the PA system. These strobe lights are gonna be in every quarter, they're gonna be at every exit or entranceway to the building. So we're gonna be adopting a plan where if the blue strobe lights are, are going off, everyone in, in the school community is gonna know, "All right, get behind a closed door or stay away from the building because something is happening," and await further instruction. So that's a standard that we're gonna have in each of the, each of the buildings. On the exterior, again, supplementing our PA systems. So if there is an announcement, an administrator uses an app, uses the phone system, uses something to call an emergency status, whether it's lockout, lockdown, shelter-in-place, those are automatically disseminated to, to the entire school community. Another feature which is secondary to this is a weapons detection system that we introduced in the June meeting. This is something, this is part of our blueprint work. This needs more vetting, I recognize that. But this system is, the opportunity, it's what in most mass gatherings, basically, now, where you're simply walking through an area, and the scan is doing analytics, and they're looking for the density of metals. So it's not wandering, it's not stopping, putting your phone, it's not that type of metal detection. It's specifically a weapons detection system that we're looking at. So we're looking at that for, you know, football games or basketball games, entry in the school. And again, this needs a lot more vetting with our school community, but it's something that we wanted to include in the plan, should this, should this be something that we pursue. So part of the stakeholder engagements for, for this plan, you can see where, where we are right now with the public hearing, and with that, again, soliciting any feedback and input from the community, we'll put together a final plan in the format that's prescribed by the state, and then we will submit all the plans and specifications with our, with our corporate partners, RELCOM and Flower City Communications. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm just reminded, as I come up here, to this new podium and system, and you're all here, that it's a good moment after Lou's presentation about that particular plan and that kind of planning. All of the work that Lou and the people that he works most directly with have done to create spaces like this, and to create learning opportunities for kids using up-to-date technology. So Lou, it's a good reminder, and I just wanna say thank you, because this is, this is pretty incredible. And we're in this space today because we have new teacher orientation. Esther stopped by and met all of the new teachers. We're kidding, because we met over in that building and then walked over. We were going to all say to you, "Where was everybody else?" We have a huge group of talented people you're gonna meet later today at the luncheon, just really, really a depth of people, good humans and smart, talented folks coming to us. And they are doing orientation, which is why we're in this space today. But it was also a good opportunity for you to experience this student space in a different way. So speaking of planning, I'm going to walk through the blueprint as it stands right now. We'll ask for your approval during the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, this Code of Conduct. Oh, let me, let me back up. We're, we're going to do that, too. I was so impressed with finding that presentation. No, it's... We're first going to talk about Code of Conduct, which was the plan. The Code of Conduct, and the portion of this meeting dedicates that, is by statute. So each one of these presentations today are required by law, these public hearings, for the community to have the opportunity to weigh in on these particular items. So every year, that happens. And the Code of Conduct changes come about as a result of the building principles, our staff living the Code of Conduct from the year before, understanding the trends and things that are happening with children and families, and thinking about how to improve that portion of our culture. So much of the work day-to-day with kids and the management of kids and thinking about how we all interact in the school environment happens really on the day-to-day in a more organic way, but there does need to be by law, a plan that shows you and the community that these are the expectations, and these are the things that we do when those expectations don't work out well, and you owe that to a community, right? You owe to a school community. But I also don't want to give the impression that on a day-to-day basis, people are walking around with the Code of Conduct as a checklist, right? This is very much about humans, human interaction, human behavior. But it does give us a codified manner of explaining to people what we do and how we operate. The highlights that I would say to you, that we've, are recommending changes in our Code of Conduct, is one, to replace gender-specific language with the neutral pronoun "they." And again, continuing to think about our work in this space, being gender-neutral, thinking about respecting all humans in our environment, and the way that they choose to identify their gender, the respectful way to approach that in terms of our documents, is to replace with the neutral pronoun. We're consolidating the location of the building codes of conduct and the way they're presented on the website, so that they're in one place for people to easily access. We looked at tardiness to school being added to the tardiness to class language. This isn't a substantive change, I'm just pointing it out to you because we should point out to you all the changes, but it was just a place where language was lacking and needed to be consolidated. Misuse of technology is identified in the Code of Conduct as obviously something that is, would, would require disciplinary consequences. What was never mentioned is the mass use, the use of mass email. And so on occasion, we've worked with young people who have used the email system to send a mass communication in a way that maybe wasn't helpful in the school environment, and so we just want to point that out as something you can't do. We do tell kids that, and there's clearly language in the past that we've been able to utilize to say, "Look, it's not allowed," and for a variety of reasons, but we want to be specific in that and make sure we're pointing that out to kids, as that becomes something more available and more commonly used as well. To answer any high school students' questions, this has nothing to do with Dr. Hall's emails to students, but that's a different topic. COVID mask language is just being updated to reflect our current policy. So last year, when we did updates, we were very clear in language around masking being required based on the Code of Conduct, and we're simply updating the language based on the current status for mask usage. And then profanity directed to a staff member, this was like, as we combed through it, there was very specific language requiring suspension, and we just updated the language to be more restorative because we recognize, obviously, profanity towards a staff member is not acceptable and something we want to work through with a student. But language that requires a very specific coercive defined consequence is not always helpful when you're trying to work through a situation with parties who've been aggrieved and worked through a restorative process. We'd like our language to be more restorative. Doesn't make it any more acceptable to use profanity, it just means that we're thinking about that differently when we work with our students. And it could be that a student is suspended for a variety of reasons in that situation, but it gives some flexibility that we're gonna work through that and not require that so specifically. I won't read all of this at you, but I just want to point out a couple of the high points, so to speak, around dress code as well, another change. And really, what we're pointing out in the language in both buildings, and there's a slight differentiation between the middle school and high school, is one, we want to make sure in any kind of dress code conversation that we're respectful of people, their gender, their approach to their own dress, their particular individuality, and what their traditions and their norms are. And so the real key is the bottom lines that are underlined. In other words, we're saying you need to be safe, appropriate, and not disrupt or interfere with the educational process. However, codes of conduct in the past, their language was much more directed at frankly, the clothing that young women were wearing as opposed to young men, and, and the language was relatively sexist. So we want to make sure we're being thoughtful in that language as well. But we do need to be clear that you can't wear clothing that depicts alcohol, drug use, violent images, et cetera. So it's really just an update to the language to be more thoughtful relative to gender. Cell phone use, this is a big one that kids will be experiencing when they come back, and it boils down to two things. One's, one at the middle school, one at the high school. At the middle school, you will not be allowed to use your phone, period. No phone use, can't use it, can't have it out of your locker, can't have it anywhere else. It, Kim's turning her phone off right now. No, I'm just kidding. You can't use your phone. And, you know, we've gone different directions with this over time, but the reality is, it is an incredible distraction for students to have the phone even with them. And it has definitely proven over time not to be something that's managed well at the middle level by the student to self-regulate. So it really makes a lot more sense for us to say, "You just can't have it with you." And we're not using it because kids have devices now as a learning tool. In other words, they don't need it to look things up, they don't really need it to take notes about homework assignments, to-do lists, things like that, because they have their device, their individual device with them, which they can do all of those same things. But the phone was a tremendous distraction. I will tell you, the phone also caused plenty of other disciplinary issues with people taking pictures of each other, taking video, using that in ways that is not always appropriate. And frankly, at that age level, it's developmentally expected that those things would happen, so why would we create a space where that continues to be allowed? And there are certainly questions about, "Well, what if I can't get a hold of my child?" I am sounding increasingly like a grumpy old man, which I'm not, but I will say to all of you, somehow, all of us survived without our parents getting a hold of us during the school day. But we say to parents all the time, "Simply call the office and we will reach out to your child, that's not a problem." The question sometimes comes up, "What about in an emergency? I'd like to be able to have my child contact me, or me be able to contact my child." I will tell you, in an emergency, that's actually not always productive communication. In emergency planning, that's not always productive communication and can actually lead to a greater challenge in managing an emergency crisis with random communication coming from the building. But again, always call the building and we can get a hold of your student, and feel like that makes the, the most sense. The amount of distraction resulting from people being able to contact children during the day or for them to make contact is pretty significant. We really want them to be focused on school while they're in school. And again, if their family needs to get a hold of them, we can certainly retrieve them. And they can always use a phone in the office, by the way, as well, to get a hold of their parents. That is always, always, always available to students as well. At the high school, thinking now, again, developmentally, when students are able to regulate a little bit differently, a little bit better, hopefully, there's a different approach to that, because we are, of course, preparing kids to leave us and be able to manage their device as they leave high school and enter their next step in life. So we're looking at it a little bit differently. And by the way, it has also been managed relatively well by students at different times. It is not managed well sometimes, though, in the classroom during instruction. So we are saying to students, "You cannot have your phone out on at all, able to distract you while you're in class." I'm not sure about everybody in this room, but I can just speak personally, when I have at, on occasion, held one of my children's devices for a variety of reasons for a period of time, the number of notifications that comes in by the minute is mind-boggling. It is a constant distraction. There's a lot of research around the distraction that this causes for people, for adults frankly as well, with notifications while they're focused on another task. And we'd like our environment to be a focused environment. So we're saying during class, you have to have your phone silenced, you have to have it put away when you come into the classroom. And there is also language saying that if the teacher has a system for people storing their phone, in other words, perhaps a pocket contraption on the back of a door, mailboxes where you put them in a numbered box, whatever it might be, that students need to comply with that. They need to put that in that space if the teacher asks them to do that. And that if they don't, there is a consequence for that. And the code gives us the language. It also has a lot of language about trying to work through that with the student and their family prior to there being a consequence, which is an important part of what we do. But the bottom line is not to be used during class. In the hallway, no problem. At lunch, no problem. In all of the other spaces, other than while you're receiving instruction in the classroom, we'd like students to be able to use their phones, and we think that that's an important part of our culture and the way we work with students. Those are the changes, and the summary of the changes. Any questions for me on the proposed Code of Conduct changes? Okay, thank you.
For the next part, we have public participation. Thank. Okay, it's not participating?
He's reading like my favorite books. Just tells you a lot about my second grade teaching style.
All right, thank you. So then we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
So, by Sue, seconded by Julie. And an approval for the minutes from the July 1st reorganization meeting. Can we have a motion approved?
Approved.
Esther?
Yes.
Esther, second, second?
Second.
Eleanor, second. We also need to approve the teacher tenure recommendation. Did you want to say anything about that?
I would. Tara O'Brien is being recommended for tenure. You might be wondering why now and not back in June when we do this. It is simply the hiring cycle, so Tara was not hired until this point, so her tenure didn't come up until right now. That is the only reason. She will be celebrated, like all the other tenure recipients come next spring. So I'll keep the comments to a minimum, other than to say to you, because we'll rattle off everything when we get to that point next year, that she's being recommended highly by Marin Jeffries, who was her principal last year, but certainly, Dr. Rio worked with her before that, and she is an outstanding individual. She's actually a political science major from Geneseo, really interesting, before getting her master's degree in social work from SUNY Buffalo. She also worked at Villa of Hope prior to coming to us here at Brighton. She's a true team player, as Mrs. Jeffries wrote to all of us, works with many classroom teachers, students, colleagues on any given day, immediately able to recall important details and history of students. She is kind, flexible, and she works with our students, sometimes supporting them during very difficult times, which you would expect in the nature of her work. She's very solution-focused, very collaborative, works very closely with her colleagues, to solve problems, works with whole groups of students. In fact, my daughter was in a class last year, that Tara worked directly with the whole class regularly on their own social-emotional learning and habits of mind as well. She works very closely with parents as well, connects with them, shares strategies that she would use at home with their children, and overall demonstrates excellence in school social work, based on her expertise, her commitment, and her connection with the kids. So without hesitation, we're recommending her for tenure today.
Okay. Looking forward to celebrating her in the spring. So can we have an approval for teacher tenure recommendation for Tara O'Brien?
So moved?
Moved by Sue.
Second.
Second by Esther?
Yes.
Moved by Sue, seconded by Esther. And next, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you. And we'll now have a presentation on the Brighton Blueprint Plan.
You know, you're eagerly anticipating this after I, you know, primed the pump before. I just want to walk through quickly the work that has been done, that you've been a part of from the beginning, and remind our community of what this is. The blueprint for us is our strategic plan. The notion, the concept of the word blueprint came about as our conversations regarding something iterative, something that takes shape over time, where you make adjustments, lays out the basic framework, but then looks for the places that you can keep improving on that blueprint. And it involves working with our community every step of the way, asking for feedback through the thought exchange done in the springtime, bringing a large group of community members together then in June to really triangulate that data, have additional conversations about what we learned from the community, and involves all of you as Board of Education members and our leadership team, and then sifting through that, determining what our priorities are, and committing to action steps to meet our goals and our objectives. And the whole point for us is to keep getting better all of the time, together, collaboratively in this community, but continuously, and not resting on our laurels, but thinking how to continuously improve our service to families. And frankly, it also is really a, a, a plan for us that allows the district to be aligned in our work, focused, and intentional. I go back all the time to the habits of mind example in our district, which now is flourishing and happening more and more K-12, but it was a place where we just... And it started prior to us really having a K through 12 plan that connected all of us. And it was great until kids went to third grade, looked at their teachers, used this great language, and yes, their teachers were smart, bright people who knew somewhat about habits of mind, but hadn't been invested in the way we did K through 2, and would say, well, tell me more about that flexible thinking? What are you talking about? Two third graders. And a lost opportunity for us to maximize our investment and capitalize on all the work that's done K through 2. So it was one example where we said, we really need to be thinking K through 12, how do we do these things in a much more aligned and focused manner? And the blueprint has allowed us to do that. And then it's also a matter of being intentional in the work and taking the steps that are required each day to continue to get better, committing to those, then following through on those, and being transparent with the community in terms of what we're doing. We started with mission vision and core values and updating those. We've obviously had these statements in the past, this was nothing new, but it's an important place to say, let's go back to our foundation. Is this still who we are and what we're all about? Our mission should answer the question why we exist and what is our core fundamental purpose. Our vision is what does it look like in the organization? What is our headline, so to speak? Brighton Schools XYZ. This is who we are and what we do, if you think about it phrased that way. And our core values is how we operate. How do we, what do we want to be known for? How do we act and how do we behave? What do we want to demonstrate to our students organizationally and hope for from both our students, but also our community members as well? Our current mission statement reads, "The mission of the Brighton Central Schools is to work in partnership to provide a meaningful, inclusive, equitable, safe, and challenging experience for each child where they are supported academically, socially, and emotionally in order to become contributing adults." That is why we exist. That is our core fundamental purpose, updated for this year that we are presenting to you. In terms of our vision, what does that look like? What's our headline? The Brighton Central School District is an organization where students feel safe, valued, included, and challenged. Every child is advocated for and connected to the school community. Families are engaged, respected, and appreciated partners. Staff are valued, supported, inspired, and committed. It might be long for a Justin Murphy headline, but we're hoping he's taking notes because you could write about that, we'd be very proud of that. And our core values in the district, what we're hoping for from our students, from our families, from our school community, is that in all of our work, we will focus on the needs of children in everything we do and every decision we make. Connect every child to a trusted adult in their peers. Honor and promote self-advocacy and student voice. Actively promote anti-racist, anti-hate values and provide an equitable experience for all stakeholders. Demonstrate integrity without exception. Model and promote kindness, inclusion, empathy, and joy. Listen actively, discuss respectfully, and find compromise. Innovate, change, and grow collaboratively. Honor the greatness and individuality of each child, family, and staff member. The plan is based on priority areas. In other words, the buckets that we say, these are the most important things right now for us to be working on. This doesn't mean it's all we work on, right? There's a lot of great work that happens each and every day, but we're saying in terms of our plan and our efforts to continuously improve, what are the areas that we've prioritized? The first is mental health and wellness. The second is academic excellence. The third is student, the student and family experience. The fourth is staff support and a collaborative culture. And the fifth is safety and planning for the future. In each of those areas, we've developed a goal or goals, these essentially are the district goals. The first, in mental health and wellness, we will support the development of the whole child by creating learning environments that foster overall mental health, wellness socially, emotionally, and physically. We will provide an inclusive environment to address the individual needs of each child and to support the attainment of each student's goals. In academic excellence, we will provide each student coursework that is challenging in order to promote individual growth. Each learner will be supported to maximize their potential based on needs and interests. We'll focus on culturally responsive and sustaining education practices by celebrating and accepting differences. We will support developing a growth mindset by all. We'll develop strategies that emphasize creativity, innovation, culturally responsive practices, and the well-being of our students. The student and family experience, we will foster an environment where each student and family feels seen, heard, valued, supported, and safe to engage within our school community. Staff support and collaborative culture, we will create a culture and environment that allows staff the opportunity to build connections and collaborate with each other. And in terms of safety and planning for the future, we will establish standards on school safety and security considering systems, training, facilities, plan, and evaluation. We will develop details for facilities master planning considering modernization and stability. So those are the overall goals in each area. What is most meaningful to this is that we then spend a considerable amount of time, and you're engaged in that process with us, in developing action plans that are very specific in terms of what will happen to support the attainment of that goal, and when will it happen? Who will do that work as well as identify? I won't read these all at you, they're presented as samples of the action plans that are quite lengthy. These are all posted on the website for people to take a look at, and these are the day-to-day what will happen then in order to support the goal. An example in mental health and wellness, we'll review the Panorama SEL data, this was the survey that people were engaged in our school community last year, and study it for implications going into this year. We will have an implementation, including data review dates as well throughout the year. I will tell you, that work has already started. We've spent time this summer going through that data and learning quite a bit about the feelings of our students and our staff and our families in terms of their engagement in the school community. So many people will be involved in unpacking that data as well, and as we said, summer has already happened, fall will happen again, spring will review that data again, and then look at gathering data again going into next year. Point being, example of the action plan, intentionally committing to, we will take these steps, this is who's going to do it and when it is going to happen. Another sample in the area of academic excellence, the first, and I mentioned the habits of mind example, continue to work with habits of mind integration and rollout for grades three through 12, build and opportunities to educate and partner with families on habits of mind. Who will do that? Building principals and building teams and the assistants who attend for instruction throughout this school year. And again, several other important steps will take place. And finally, another sample in the student and family experience, continue to develop the existing historical opportunities where students from different buildings engage with each other in meaningful ways. And that would be our Director of Student and Family Engagement, Jeff Green, building, level leaders, mental health staff, student leadership groups, and that will happen throughout the year, and we would imagine that continues as an action step in future years also. And finally, staff support, I shouldn't say finally, there's safety also, staff support and collaborative culture. An example, establish time to collaborate with others within the building and across the district for providing coverage for collaboration, committee work, superintendence days, asynchronous day. The building and district administrators really need to continue to work on that. This is things like thinking carefully about that conference day in the middle of the year that we've provided now for people to reset like we did last year. Being very intentional in taking those steps, knowing that this helps to build our collaborative culture and support our staff at a time when they really need that. And finally, in the safety area, the first action step, develop a master plan for emergency communications, coordinating radios, phones, cameras, lockdown buttons. I hope you see, that's part of our emergency communication system. The, I hope you see that connection, again, when we talk about connecting our plans, connecting and being intentional in our work. Lou just presented on this very topic as, as we started today in the public session. So again, very coordinated, very aligned and focused throughout the district. What's really interesting is the, is the next step actually, which for us is a step, I think, in the evolution of this type of planning, which is the unpacking. So what we did this year differently is be very intentional about taking the action plans and then saying, okay, what does it mean then for your school building or your program? And we've now clearly defined at the high school, in the area of academic excellence, safety, family engagement, each of the priority areas, action steps that they are specifically taking to support the plan. And at French Road, at the middle school, at Council Rock, and in visual performing arts, and in athletics, and in family and student engagement. So there is a different component in every area, and those will be presented to the staff as they come back, to say, okay, the, the broad plan for the district is great, those are clear action steps that you should be aware of, but here's what it means for us in our program. And it's just a more intentional step to unpack the work that's done that has really guided us, but make it more meaningful for individually, individual buildings, departments, and programs. We'll communicate to the greater school community, starting this week after your approval in this meeting, and to the faculty on opening day, and that unpacking again will continue to happen. And another way that we make this very intentional and specific is every one of our committees, building committees and district-wide committees, will have a standardized charter document this year, different than they have before, that aligns to the blueprint work that they're doing, identifies clearly the goals of that committee and what their deliverables should be, who's going to participate, when they're going to be meeting, a very clear organizational charter as they start their work. So we're making clear to people when they begin, how their work is connected to the blueprint, what the expectation is, when they're joining together as a team, this is what your objective is and what we're hoping to accomplish. We think organizationally, that's going to help those committees be very focused and on task as well. What you should expect and what our community should expect in this work is transparency in our work. This is just an interesting concept that I wanted to mention. Here a little bit, but in broader conversations around schoolwork across our country and our state, there is a narrative about transparency, about transparency in curriculum, about transparency in the conversations we're having with kids. And we pointed out last year that we're very transparent actually in that work, it's all available to you. So I'm reminding people again, if they're wondering what we do with their children and what our efforts are to improve, open up this document and it is all right there. You can't miss what we have committed to and what we are all about. We're communicating clearly what our expectations are as a school community, being a very mission-driven, focused organization as well. This builds collaboration, we believe. So many people were involved in the development of this plan, but now to make it happen, you can see as you go through all of the who's, it's lots of different people working on this and working on it together. And again, you should expect a mission-driven, goal-focused organization, being very intentional about our motto and our catchphrase that we use often, every child, every day, and every way. And that's throughout our plan, integrated into our work. And I'd finally make one last comment. A very important part of this process this year was the intentional use of an equity lens in each of the priority areas. At the end of the development of the plan, we stopped and said, now we need to review every one of the priority areas with an equity lens. We learned more about an equity lens, and then we dug into exploring every one of our action steps and determining whether or not we had been thoughtful about being equitable for all of our stakeholders, all of our community members, inclusive in that work, and really honoring each individual and their engagement in the plan as well. So we really, really proud of the work. You can tell I may be a little bit enthusiastic about it, but we thank you for your support in that and for participating in the process on behalf of the community in your role as elected representatives of every community member. Do you have questions for me on the presentation?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will, we have been fortunate enough to be part of this process for the Brighton Blueprint Plan, and now I'll ask for a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Brighton Blueprint Plan.
So.
Is that Esther?
You were faster.
I was faster?
Yeah.
Second?
Sure.
By Julie, seconded by Eleanor?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're all in favor. Okay. And we'll move on to the approval for the professional development plan. This is an annually updated plan by Dr. Rio, based on evolving needs and is required to be submitted to the State Ed Department.
Well, Dan pulled that up because I told Dan I would be splitting if I had pulled this up.
Yeah.
So thank you, Dan. We'll just start off with a brief update on some of the professional development that's happening this summer, just to keep you in the loop. It's not necessarily part of the plan, but it's just nice to hear what's been going on this summer. Thank you, Dan. And then the professional development plan is a three-year plan, but we made a few changes to it this year that I just wanted to share with you, so this will be a brief presentation. But to start us off, just some pictures of some of the great work that's happening around the district this summer. There's no way that I could capture all of the great work of our teachers and colleagues, but some highlights, the Makerspace Visioning Team, a group of teachers, administrators, working K-12 to design what Makerspaces look like across the district and all of our four buildings, visioning out for the future, what we hope experiences students can have, and what the spaces will look like, and more importantly, what learning will happen in the room and why we're creating Makerspaces. So this was the start of kind of trying to think about our learning K-12 instead of just in pockets of each school building, and there's a lot more to do, which is really exciting, but this was a great kickoff. We've continued with our letters training, this has been going on for several years, with all of our K-2 teachers and now expanding into French Road as well, and we have Jen Gallo and Heather McEldefe running this training throughout the year and in the summer for us, so continued learning about letters, which is really about the science of reading and a different approach to reading instruction than we've done in the past, focusing more on phonics and phonemic awareness and helping kids to understand that before they move into some other components of reading. But that's been awesome, met several times this summer, this group, this cohort right here that kicked off just in July. We've had our district professional day for two groups, and we have one more upcoming group. The focus has been around social-emotional learning and how to fit that into the curriculum that you already do. So we had two presenters join us from Applied Coaching who worked around helping teachers to understand the CASL framework and seeing what that looks like in incorporating those components of social-emotional learning into their lessons every day. So kind of what little things can you be doing in the work that you already do? So not trying to add another piece, but just rethink some of the work that we do. This was a very powerful session and allowed people to dive a little bit more into the framework and then think about some of the lessons that they do in their classroom. And we have another session coming up next week. And continued work around learning spaces. This summer, we targeted a big group of third-grade teachers at French Road to think about redesigning their classrooms, and again, similar to that Makerspace, not just about the space, not just about the tables and chairs and different pieces around the classroom, but also about the learning that's happening in the classroom and how we're thinking about that differently to meet the needs of our students today. So these are just some highlights for you. Eighty-eight sessions were offered this summer of professional development, not including the DPD days, which every teacher will attend, and 787 people were enrolled, obviously some in multiple sessions because we don't have that many teachers here, but we had a lot of PD going on, many days, central office, and the buildings were full. So I just highlighted some of them below, you've heard me talk a little bit about them, but the piece that I didn't mention was all the curriculum work, our UBD institutes redesigning the curriculum in mostly 612, but we also had some fifth-grade teachers there this summer as well, a big group of high school teachers looking at grading for equity. K-2 did some standard work around creating rubrics and benchmarking for writing, our world language teacher has, teachers have been meeting in the group of 612, which has been amazing. Math training for sixth grade, lots of great stuff happening this summer, and this is just a small sampling. So couldn't talk about PD without sharing the great work that's been going on this summer. And this is from our PD plan, this is not any different. As I mentioned at the beginning, the professional development plan is created every three years, and this is a plan that should carry us through June 2023, although we did make a few changes to it just to keep updated with what are we required to put in the plan. But our vision for professional learning for the district stays the same. We are really looking at making sure that our teachers have quality learning experiences to continue their growth in their profession. We follow the standards for professional learning put out by Learning Forward. This is the same that we've been looking at for many years, but kind of the big driving forces of the work that we do with our teachers and faculty and staff. And then lots of different ways that we view professional development, our district professional days, as I mentioned, superintendents days, our induction program is a great way to work with new teachers. We have so many new teachers, about 30 new teachers this year alone, and over the past three years, close to 80 or 90 teachers, I think, right now. So the work that we do in the induction program is really powerful. Mentoring and then faculty meetings, team leader meetings, team meetings, department meetings, lots of different ways to reach professional development. And lots of ways for teachers to access it, too, in district, out of district, other districts, offerings through Monroe One BOCs, through Monroe Two BOCs, through out-of-district conferences, anything teachers are interested in and looking for, we try to find a way to support. So again, our current plan is in effect, but the ways that we've shifted this that I wanted you to be aware of as we submit this new plan to New York State, we shifted the policy board to include our instructional leadership team. So we have a team of instructional leaders who meet on a monthly basis that represent K through 12, and it made sense to include them on the policy board. They are the teachers in the district who do a lot of the work around professional development, they work with the teachers, they lead, a ton of that work that I shared with you is led by our instructional leadership team. So this year, we're looking at merging the policy board to include the instructional leadership team. We added some additional language around CTLA requirements for professional development[1736.33] plan to New York State, we shifted the policy board to include our instructional leadership team. So we have a team of instructional leaders who meet on a monthly basis that represent K through 12. And it made sense to include them on the policy board. They are the teachers in the district who do a lot of the work around professional development. They work with the teachers. They lead, a ton of that work that I shared with you is led by our instructional leadership team. So this year, we're looking at merging the policy board to include the instructional leadership team. We added some additional language around CTE requirements for professional development requirements for teachers that they need for their certification. And we added our teacher induction program framework. New York State has asked that we have a clear goals and outline of what our induction program looks like. We didn't have to make anything up. We have an amazing induction program. So we just added that piece to the professional development plan so that it was clearly communicated. And then some language around professional learning for teachers of ELL students was added in the plan as well. But otherwise, it's very similar to last year's plan, and we'll continue our great work around professional development. Questions? All right, thanks.
All right. So a motion to approve the professional development plan?
So moved.
So moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So then, the next, next on the agenda is approval of professional service contracts. These are based on the need to update agreements for our continued capital work throughout the district. Any questions about that? Anything you needed to say?
No.
Okay, any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Julie, seconded?
Second.
Second by Esther. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so that is approved. Next is the resolution to approve the standard workday. This is required for auditing purposes. Did you want to say anything about this?
Well, I, yeah, I would just comment that the board is supposed to, by statute, adopt a standard workday so that there's a baseline to calculate half-days, less time than that, et cetera. If you don't actually establish, here's what the standard is, then anytime you're calculating from there and accounting for people's use of time, you're, you're basing that accounting on a ruler that doesn't exist, the best way to put it. So for auditing purposes, you have to adopt a standard workday. That said, collective bargaining agreements and individual employee agreements will more clearly define that based on the requirements for different positions. But you do have to create a standard measure to start that with.
Motion to approve the resolution to approve the standard workday?
So moved.
So moved by Eleanor, seconded?
Second.
Second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Um, next is the approval of settlement, of a settlement agreement with a particular employee. Motion to approve by Julie, seconded?
Second.
Esther?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by Esther. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? No. Okay. And the next one is a first reading of Policy 5621, which is fixed asset inventories, accounting, and tracking.
This is very exciting work, groundbreaking in fact, but also another audit requirement to make sure that there's a clear policy for that, which we believe we had previously had. But as we've moved our work and updated our policy book, we need to make sure that that is included. And again, for audit purposes as well, that's a required policy. So we're asking to make sure that you add that. It's pretty straightforward business operations policy.
So we're just doing a reading?
It's just a first reading.
Yep. Okay, so the next on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda, but I wanted to first mention that we've had a gift in the amount of $700 from Mary Ann Valkovich to the BHS PTSD hardship fund. And thank you so much for that gift. Approval for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Sue, seconded?
Second.
Second by Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. Is there anything?
Yeah, we have to actually go back and vote on the first.
To vote on the first reading, okay. That's okay. So we're going to go back and vote on the first reading of Policy 5621. Motion to approve?
Approve.
Approved by Esther, second?
Second.
Second by Eleanor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then?
Just a motion to adjourn?
Just, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Julie, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.